Can mute?
So I'd like to call the Madison City Council May 10th meeting to order. And Pastor Emmanuel Pierre from Restoration Church is going to come lead us in prayer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's take a moment of silence to just consider the communities worldwide who have suffered a loss last week due to COVID, to mass violence and to targeted violence. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for an opportunity, Lord, to come together, Lord. We pray that you would look down upon your people, your citizens, your leaders and your servants, as we gather to discharge the duties that have been placed upon us. Father, we ask that you would allow us to create an atmosphere of community, of productivity, and of just allow us to have fellowship, Lord, even here, conducting business. We pray that you would allow the atmosphere to be one of cooperation and consideration of others. Father, we thank you and we pray that you might bless Madison, that we can bless the region, our state and our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Will y'all join me in the pledge?
The flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and liberty and justice for all.
Can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears, here. Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Council President Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett, here. Councilmember Denzine.
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. I have two, I have one addition and one change. We have Mr. Neil Lamb that's going to present. So he'll be F on the presentations. He's with Hudson Alpha and he'll be giving us a COVID update tonight. And in the consent agenda, we have it's listed as hexagon under G, I mean as intergraph and it needs to be hexagon under G of the consent agenda. That's only two changes that I have. Anybody else have anything? All right, we'll move forward and ask for approval amendments on April 26th.
Need to approve?
Second.
Motion is second? We have any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And motion passes. We'll move into presentation and awards and we'll start with a presentation by Senator Tom Butler and Senator Arthur Orr to the Bob Jones High School team in recognition of their state championship.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to present awards to Coach and to the esports team from Bob Jones. I'm going to do the coach first. We've got all the kids here. Oh, okay, good. This is a resolution by Senator Orr and myself recognizing Coach Aubrey White. This is her second state championship and she assured me just a minute ago she's working on her third. So this is where as with great pride and special pleasure, we extend highest congratulations and commendations to Coach Aubrey White for her professional achievements. And whereas Coach White has been teaching in the English department at Bob Jones High School since 2018, Coach White began in 2019 as the coach of the Bob Jones High School Rocket League and esports team. Rocket League is fantastical sports-based video game. It features a competitive game mode based on teamwork and outmaneuvering opponents. Coach White enjoys coaching the team with all her heart. It pushes itself to continue to improve and grow. And whereas under her great leadership and guidance, the Rocket League at Bob Jones High School won the Alabama High School Athletic Association Class 1A 7A State Championship for the second consecutive year. And whereas an inspiration, a leader and a friend to many, Coach White is very deserving of special recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Senate, the Legislature of Alabama that Coach Aubrey White is highly commended and we hereby dedicate this resolution to her with the utmost appreciation and admiration along with sincere best wishes for contingent success in all her endeavors. Coach?
President, I have a resolution for the team by Senator Butler and myself congratulating the team in the second, as you said, consecutive leader victory there in the Rocket League is a fantastical sports-based video game. I can't say that I've ever seen the rocket video game that is developed by Pysonics, Psionics. It features a competitive game mode based on teamwork and outmaneuvering opponents. Players work to advance the ball down the field and score goals. The team members are of the Rocket League are Joshua Vanoy, Jordan Hazuga, Mateo Santiago and Cooper Skelly. And under the coach of Aubrey White, the teamwork through teamwork diligence and unwavering commitment to excellence, the Rocket League continues to reign victorious. And the Senate of the legislature highly congratulates them for their achievements and dedicates this resolution to the team members and Coach in the heartiest admiration. Best wishes for a third championship at the state level. So congratulations to you guys. Proud of you.
You're welcome.
I guess I can say a few words. Thank you. Thank you, Council, for having us today. Esports is very new and so I just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about that for just a second. It's incredibly new and I know a lot of parents are, you know, concerned about what video games their students or their children are playing. But now it is competitive and they can compete against all high schools. We have regional leagues as well, but the team that we're, you know, observing today and celebrating today is our state team and they're, you know, competing against other high schools in the state of Alabama. And right now they're super successful. So this is just our Rocket League team, but we do have multiple teams that compete in multiple games. They receive scholarships and so this is the first championship they've won where they will receive college scholarships for their win. They'll receive that scholarship funding after the spring season concludes. And so we've got, you know, colleges are now, you know, in stating esports on a collegiate level for them to compete. Careers are looking at these students as well. So esports is very big and if you have any questions, I would love to answer any of them that you have. If you're interested to see like what it looks like, what it is, like I said, contact me and I would love to get you looking at what esports is and what these students and children do. I can, we can talk all day. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Now, we'll move into the 2021 City Chess Champions.
Thank you so much. I'd like to ask our sponsor for our city chess championship, Neil Mini Thompson, who's the CEO of Systems Products and Solutions, Inc., to come up here to help me with this presentation. SPS has sponsored this tournament since it began in 2016. Madison is the only city in Alabama that hosts a grade-level city chess championship where we crown the winners in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way to 12th grade. This year, most of our chess tournaments were held online because of the pandemic. And so normally, we would hold award ceremonies at the conclusion of the tournament, but because this was held online, I'm very appreciative for the city council to let me recognize the city chess champions this year. Now, this year, the city chess championship was conducted online in a blitz format. That means really fast. The kids that we're going to introduce you to tonight each won their games in five minutes or less. And so they're quick on their feet and I want to thank Ms. Thompson for helping us each year in recognizing these kids. And usually she comes to James Clemens when we do the award ceremony. And Ms. Thompson also has a little surprise for each of the kids as they come up. And so what we're going to do, we're going to swap places and I'm going to have Ms. Thompson over here and I'm going to have y'all line up over there as I call your name, okay?
I mean, they are, they are really doing a great job in this little organization. I mean, it's been like six years. So I have a little, another one more surprise for the organization. Today I was trying to understand, okay, what did they do the last year? And it's been with because of the COVID, you were not able to do a lot of things. So I was trying to figure what's happening. So we're going through the website and seeing all this accomplishment, all these young kids accomplishing. You know, I noticed that we didn't have any grandmaster sponsorships. I thought, you know, with all these champions, I want to be part of that organization. So I'm here to say also on behalf of all these champions here recognized today, I would like to be the year grandmaster champion and be the sponsor for that going forward. So, yes.
Thank you so much. That is our highest level of sponsorship. So we're going to switch places. If you want to bring your box up here behind the podium and I'll let Ms. Thompson go this way. And yeah, and then the kids are going to come to your left, okay, as I call them up. Okay, we're going to start with the kindergarten champions. We actually had a tie. We have co-champions. Jimmy McHugh, come on up, and Alice Zo. You guys can stay up here. Yeah, just go ahead and stay right there. Okay, and we're going to go to first grade Dennis Linsky, and I don't think Dennis could be here tonight, so I'll take his to him. Second grade, we had another tie. Esteban Jerez, come on up. And Kylie Zo. Our third grade champion, Dax Shunil. Fourth grade champions, we had another tie. Sophia Jerez. Jethro Jones. Our fifth grade champion, Anna Ai. Our sixth grade champion, Xavier Bruni. Seventh grade was one of our largest sections and we had a three-way tie for first place. Nirvana Rajbandari. Artem Starinky. Eddie Zhao. Eighth grade champions, another three-way tie. We have one of the fastest-growing middle school teams in the state and the nation. Zachary Kalinsky. Caleb Chan and Ovia Gouter. Our ninth grade champion is Rachel Erman. She's at Girl Scouts tonight, so she couldn't be here. Tenth grade champion Sherwood Dong. Eleventh grade champion was Will Fox. And our 12th grade champion is Will Bow. Congratulations to all of our champions. Thank you, Ms. Thompson and SPS for your unending support. We just are so grateful to you and helping, helping these kids continue their skills. A number of them are going to be playing in state playoffs to see who represents our state in a national tournament of champions later this summer. So these kids have done awesome work all year long and they've shown that they can excel online and over the board. So thank you all and meet outside because Ms. Nadia is going to take a group picture with you and Ms. Thompson, okay? Thank you.
Amazing.
Very good. Next we have.
Kindergartners. I mean, kindergartners, I was eating the pizza, not playing.
Next we have Madison Rotary for the police officer, firefighter and employee of the year.
May want to give them a second to kind of.
Thank you. We're going to move around just a little bit. Jason, if I tear anything up. All righty. Hello, everybody. I'm sorry to have my back to some of you. I'm Debbie Overcash, a member of the Rotary Club of Madison and chair of the Madison Employee of the Year recognition. Tonight, we are celebrating the 20th year that the Rotary Club of Madison, in cooperation with the city of Madison, has had the privilege of recognizing outstanding Madison public servants. These fine employees have been selected by their supervisors for this very well-deserved recognition. Our appreciation tonight includes a plaque for each individual, inclusion on the perpetual plaque here at City Hall, four tickets to the Rotary Club's annual fundraiser, and a monetary gift from the Rotary Club of Madison and our entire city's gratitude for a job very well done. We are happy tonight to recognize outstanding employees who represent law enforcement, fire protection and community services. If Mayor Finley, Council President Shaw and Rotary Club President Peter Alvarez will join me, we will recognize our 2021 outstanding Madison employees. Look how well they listen sometimes. Chief Bailey, if you and Brandy will join us at the front, please. And Chief Bailey, we'll let you have the big plaque that's right behind Greg, firefighter. Thank you. We'd like to say congratulations to Madison's firefighter of the year, firefighter paramedic Ken Howard. Ken, will you please join us at the front? All righty. The 2021 Madison firefighter and rescue firefighter and rescue firefighter for the year is Ken Howard. Ken and his wife Kim live in Madison with their two children, ages five and eight. Ken has been with the department for seven years. He served as a firefighter, paramedic for five years, and has served as a driver, engineer and paramedic for the past two years. Chief Bailey says, when we ask our members for nominations for this award, we supplement the requests with selection criteria. The criteria includes a member that has demonstrated dedication, loyalty, service and professionalism. This year, we received detailed written recommendations outlining all of these attributes for Ken from both his shift captain and our chief of special operations. Ken seeks out opportunities to help his shift to improve his station and to enhance our service delivery. As an example, to separate crews because of COVID-19, we moved our Station One engine company to the old abandoned Public Works facility on Celtic Drone. Ken was one of several members instrumental in making that site a working firehouse. He donated his personal household items to make it a nicer place and worked hard to create a livable facility. To date, he has made and mounted the firefighter flag plaque and is in the dayroom at his station and the fire hose flag that is in the kitchen at Station One. Ken asked to lead the retrofit of our used pickup trucks to serve as a first response paramedic squad. This involved the design of equipment placement, building mounting brackets, mounting all equipment and troubleshooting the many items that needed attention. This squad has been in service for a couple of months and has worked out so well that we plan to utilize this platform for special squads. Ken is an accomplished driver, engineer, a proficient firefighter and often the lead paramedic at incidents. This past year, he supervised the paramedic orientation program for three of the shift pneumatics, helping to ensure excellent service for our citizens. Additionally, he serves as one of our SWAT team medics and serves on our public safety unmanned aircraft program, drone program, as the lead ground support team member. Chief Bailey says of Ken, Ken's experience, his calm demeanor, no matter the circumstance, his teamwork ethic and his positive spirit have led him to be a his teamwork ethic, and his positive spirit have led him to be a tremendous asset for his shift, for the department, and for the citizens of Madison. We are very fortunate to have him in our ranks. I want to congratulate driver engineer Ken Howard on this very well-deserved award of Madison firefighter of the year, 2021. Congratulations, Mr. Howard. Peter Alvarez of the Rotary Club has a little something for you as well, Ken. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you. Yes. Went too far. Acting Chief Stringer, will you please join us? Congratulations to the Madison Police Officer of the Year, Shannon DeFazio. Officer DeFazio, will you please join us? The Madison Deputy Police Department has selected Crisis Intervention Team Officer Shannon DeFazio to receive the Madison Rotary Club Police Officer of the Year Award. Officer DeFazio has been employed with the Madison Police Department since June of 2018. In February of 2020, Officer DeFazio was certified as a Crisis Intervention Team, CIT Officer, with specialized training to deescalate and assist citizens experiencing mental health crisis. In that time, Officer DeFazio has been responsible for mitigating countless calls for service involving our citizens experiencing mental health crisis. In January of 2021, she was appointed by Madison Probate Judge Frank Barger as Community Mental Health Officer with further training and authority to assess citizens experiencing severe mental health crises. This appointment grants Officer DeFazio the authority to begin the involuntary mental commitment of persons who are a hazard to themselves or others. In one 12-hour shift, she responded to three mental health calls for service that resulted in the involuntary commitment of three citizens who were in a danger to themselves and would have suffered further without immediate mental assistance. Officer DeFazio has also provided leadership to her fellow CIT officers by representing the department at the Huntsville-Madison County CIT One at a Time Committee, which adopts a multidisciplinary team approach to assisting citizens in our area who repeatedly experience a crisis but do not meet criteria for involuntary commitment. She also assisted in developing training material to provide an overview, overview for all patrol officers on the role, authority, and services provided by CIT personnel. Officer DeFazio has received multiple letters of recognition from her peers and her supervisors over the last year. She has also been the recipient of two Madison Police Life Saving Medals within the last year for performing CPR on subjects who were unresponses, unresponsive, and without a pulse. In the recent event for which she received this honor, the on-duty sergeant was convinced the patient was not going to respond to life-saving efforts and begun, had begun a call for investigators to respond for a death investigation when officers announced the patient had a pulse. In both cases, Madison Fire and HEMZ medics advised that without persistent CPR, the patient would not have survived. For intelligent police services to our community that goes above and beyond the call of duty while displaying the finest traditions of the Madison Police Department's commitment to protecting and serving our community, we are pleased to present Officer Shannon DeFazio as the Madison Rotary Club's Police Officer of the Year. Acting, Acting Chief Stringer says, Officer Shannon DeFazio is the type of public servant and police officer that we hold up to our community and employees as an example of what professional police services are all about. When applicants go through the extensive selection process to become Madison Police Officers, we evaluate them for many qualities. Ultimately, it comes down to one thing, character. The Madison Police Officer must be a person of character who will serve the community with respect, dignity, honor, intelligence, loyalty, and compassion. Character is the summation of those traits that we believe our citizens deserve. Officer DeFazio embodies character and lives that as an example to the officers that she works with and the citizens she serves. Nowhere is that more evident than in her dedication to our Crisis Intervention Team that provides invaluable service to what was once an underserved segment of our population. Her care and commitment to making a positive and sustainable difference in the lives of our citizens who experience mental health crises is impressive and inspiring. I'm impressed with her commitment to serving our community and raising the bar for her fellow officers in serving and protecting our community. I'm proud to serve with Officer DeFazio and appreciate the example that she sets for all personnel on the Madison Police Department. Congratulations, Officer DeFazio. Congratulations so much. All right, Mayor Finley, you're up next. Congratulations to the Madison Employee of the Year, Director of IT, Jason Colley. During the During the 2020 year of COVID, many citizens of Madison, many City of Madison employees stood out as exceptional, but our Director of IT, Jason Colley, tops this list. While Jason would immediately point out that this was a team IT effort, his leadership, management, and proactiveness stood out. Each year, Jason and the IT team support over 300 full-time employees, making sure computers, software, phones, and all other electronic devices work smoothly. Going into 2020, our IT department also managed large projects, projects, including the implementation of our NPD records management system and major equipment and software upgrades system-wise. Add to this the continued threat of cyber intrusion and IT has their hands full. And then COVID hit. IT immediately pivoted to support our city and employees throughout the pandemic. Laptops were quickly outfitted for employees who needed to work from home. Additional facilities, including three springs and our old Public Works Building, were brought up to speed with internet and phone, allowing us additional room to spread out. In-city hotspots downtown and in our parks were more properly outfitted for additional wireless connectivity, all under Jason's leadership. Jason's focus on cybersecurity has also stood out during this year. His strategic development of our hardware-software configuration has to date been very successful. In addition, IT added cyber training citywide, helping our employees better understand threats and making it easy to document possible situations. Mayor Finley says, Jason's positive attitude shines each day at City Hall. His ability to thrive under COVID-added workload and stress continues to pay huge dividends for our city and community. We are proud of Jason and happy to call him Madison Employee of the Year. Congratulations, Jason. Congratulations. The residents of Madison, along with Mayor Finley, our city council, and the Rotary Club of Madison, thank these fine individuals for their service to our community and congratulate you all on a job very well done. Please, let's give them another hand. Typically, a reception is held in honor of these fine employees. However, being mindful of social distancing, we hope you all enjoy the pickup reception as you enter council chambers. Please join me again in congratulating and thanking our honorees. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie. Next we have Ms. Chris McBride, Director of Convention and Visitor Bureau.
Good evening, Mayor Finley and council members. I'm Chris McBride, Board Chair for the Huntsville-Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau and a proud Madison resident. The CVB, as we're commonly referred to, is the agency that promotes Huntsville, Madison, and all of Madison County as a visitor destination and meeting site. Our mission is to maximize the economic impact of travelers to this community. The CVB has a full-time staff of 14 and more than 30 part-time employees who work diligently to bring visitors of all types here to our community. The local hospitality industry continues to grow. As you know, a number of new hotels are under construction in Madison and developments like Town Madison continue to expand. We are excited to see the return of AA baseball to the community with the first Trash Pandas home game at Toyota Field tomorrow night. And we look forward to promoting the games and other activities throughout the summer, just as we did last year with their many events and activities. In fact, events here at Toyota Field receive the most and second-most page views for events on our website. More than 34,000 page views of the Big Old Ballpark Fair and 28,000 page views for the Rocket City Christmas Spectacular topped the list for special event page views. Toyota Field itself was in the top 10 list for our Things to Do, also based on website traffic. The CVB website saw more than 2.6 million page views. That's a lot of eyes on Madison events and activities, and since so many use our website to get information on attractions and events to plan their visits here. Madison is featured or included in more than 50 blogs on the website, 55 Twitter posts, and 40 Facebook posts just since December. Toyota Field was featured as our Venue of the Month in February. Even with monumental changes and challenges that COVID forced upon the travel industry, the CVB continued to promote Madison's restaurants, outdoor activities, lodging providers, and venues. We work with a company called Threshold 360 and have created, posted, and promoted videos of venues to inform meeting planners, visitors, and others until an in-person visit can be arranged to these meeting venues. The top two locations viewed via Threshold 360 are Tom Brown's Restaurant and of course Toyota Field with more than 16,000 views combined. And there are also two of the top three most engaged locations. According to the recent Alabama Tourism Department report, Madison County still had over 2.8 million visitors in 2020 who spent in excess of $1.2 billion. The impact of travel and tourism saved every household in Madison County an estimated $700 in taxes last year. I know you'll agree that travel and tourism is big business. The CVB constantly promotes the facilities, events, and activities in this community to meeting conferences and, and conference planners, group tour leaders and organizers, leisure travels, and travel media from across the country and even around the world. Our marketing efforts with meeting planners, the site visits and tour we arrange for them to come see our community, and our subsequent responses to their request for proposal where we compete with other communities to host conferences can result in hundreds or even thousands of visitors for just one meeting event. Even when the pandemic slashed travel by more than 80%, the CVB pivoted to support local businesses. For example, we produced a video called "Hope Is Not Canceled", which highlighted the resilience of people in the local hospitality industry and looked ahead to better days. We also actively conveyed the information to restaurant workers and owners to ensure that they knew of the COVID financial relief and business resources available. As travel slowly returned, the marketing focus gradually shifted from local to regional to match the travel patterns as they grew larger. I'd like to ask Jamie Koschefer, our Vice President of Conventions and a Madison resident himself, to outline a few of the other ways the CVB promotes the City of Madison. Jamie?
Thank you, Chris. Our convention team works to bring in conferences, meetings, trade shows, reunions, and sporting events. And part of that team is, we have four sales managers and one conference service manager, including myself, promoting these events and looking for these events. And I lead a team of sales and service professionals who connect with meeting planners from the state, the region, and across the country to persuade them to hold their events here in our wonderful city. We travel to trade shows, meet with key decision-makers, and work closely with our hospitality partners, put together proposals to bring conferences and events here to our community. The convention team also hosts meeting planners for city familiarization tours in which we get to highlight all the great amenities of our city. And we're so excited about amenities that are coming to Town Madison, and we've already had site tours out at Toyota Field. Uh, and through this pandemic, we've used Threshold 360 to be able to communicate this to meeting planners in a virtual way, highlighting all the amenities in a 360 photography. So we're able to email the planners and, and continue to sell our city to bring these meetings and conferences and sporting events to our city. Currently, we're assisting with the Southwestern Baseball Championship, which is happening in May. Our sports sales manager, Mark McCarter, is working closely, um, with, with Madison to make that happen in the Trash Pandas. We also work closely with citywide conferences that bring in 6,000 attendees to our city. And that one main one is called Global Force Symposium with the Association of United States Army. So that's back on the books for 2022, and you know, that conference in itself, I mean, sells out Madison County, Huntsville, Madison, Madison County, and pushes beyond that as well. So that's our goal, is to try to attract those conferences to our city. Another department within our organization is the Tourism Department. They're focused on group travel, leisure travel, as well as operation of two visitor centers that fire helpful visitor information assistance. These centers provide visitors with a wealth of information such as destination guides, maps, dining guides, the Trains on Main rack cards, and outdoor recreation brochures. They also travel to meet with tour operators, group travel leaders, to include visits here for their clients, both domestic and international, and there's members on that team as well. The marketing department works with the other departments to design, print, and post information included in all of our collateral pieces and on the website. The most recent addition to our staff is a graphic designer who creates graphics, advertisements for use on billboards, advertisements, and publications on the website. Information on the City of Madison is featured on the website, Madison events, as mentioned by Chris McBride, and activities, including the Rocket City Trash Pandas home games at Toyota Field. Marketing also works with print, social, and broadcast media representatives to inform their readers, followers, and viewers of the wealth of events and activities here. You might also have seen the results of some of our outreach in an article in an airline magazine, I believe it was American Airlines, in which it has a large subscription base. A full-time social media specialist manages posts on various timely subject matter and interacts with visitors who have questions or additional assistance before, during, or even after their stay. In addition, we arrange press conferences with broadcast media and fun things such as Restaurant Week and Attraction Week and to, and add to our quality of life. Although the CVB offers many of these services free of charge to meeting and event planners that other destinations charge for, we represent all local attractions, hotels, restaurants, facilities with no memberships required. So a lot of other Convention and Visitors bureaus out there is a membership-based organization. So we just, our goal is to support everybody. Madison is a growing part of our industry with nearly 20% of the rooms in the county and adds to the quality of life of residents and enjoyment of visitors. We're fortunate to have elected officials who truly understand the importance of hospitality industry, and we're committed to representing our entire community as a meeting site and visitor destination. So that's it. I'm all done. I'm happy to answer any questions. Chris McBride is happy to ask any questions. Charles is also here from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Michael Glenn, Madison County Health Department.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and address you again this year to kind of give you an update on what your health department's been doing over the last year. Wow, what a difference a year makes. Last time I was here was last March. We were just beginning to learn about COVID-19. Alabama had not gotten their first case of COVID-19 yet. That Friday after, our first positive case in the state came. Um, over the next nine months, the Health Department spent a lot of time educating community partners about what we knew about it at that point in time and testing when about what we knew about it at that point in time and testing when testing came available in all of our county health departments. Thankfully, with Mayor Finley, other leadership of Madison County, our task force was quickly put together to keep the community informed, as well as all of us on the same page as well. And that was instrumental in Madison County's getting through this as well as they did. Today marks that we begin our twentieth week of vaccinating at the county health department. We will exceed a little over twenty-five thousand doses of vaccine at Madison County Health Department this week that has been administered there. All of our health departments in North Alabama will exceed a hundred and fifty-five thousand doses of vaccine that have been administered this week in the last twenty weeks. In the very beginning, it was a challenge as vaccine became more readily available. A lot of the weeks in the very beginning, the health department only got five hundred doses of vaccine, which we quickly, the demand was so high that it didn't last but a day. We had to wait till the next shipment come in before we could do that. Thankfully, vaccine is readily available now. Anybody that wants a vaccine can get a vaccine. So we're very thankful of that. Just some of the highlights of what has happened in the state so that you kind of have a timeframe exactly what's going on in the populations that have been served. Thankfully, those that are the most vulnerable to this virus, those sixty-five and older were put at the front of the line for vaccinations. And I'm happy to report that those that are seventy-five and older in the state, seventy-three percent of those folks have received, are fully vaccinated at this point in time. So that's a tremendous thing. The sixty-five and seventy-four age group, about seventy percent of those have received full vaccination. And so that's a good thing because they are having the worst outcomes. Our most challenging group at this point in time are those that are sixteen to fifty-four. Less than twenty-five percent of our state's population are have been started vaccination at this point in time. And it's not, it's it's due to not due to vaccine being available because in Madison County alone, we currently have fifty approved providers, counting the health department that have vaccine readily available within twenty-five miles of the health department. And so we continue to get to try to get the word out of the importance of vaccination, masking and social distancing. And so just thank you again for your support over the last year. It's been tremendous help to us as we continue to try to meet the needs of not only the citizens of Madison City, but Alabama in general. And so if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those for you and just thank you again for this opportunity.
You question?
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks so much. Wrapping up our presentations is Mr. Neil Lamb from Hudson Alpha.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak again about COVID nineteen. So we'll just continue on the presentation that you've already heard. We are not going to dive deep into science. This is not going to feel like a biology or a chemistry or an immunology lesson. We're going to focus on three key things. Virus numbers, vaccine and variants. And then we'll end with a few common questions that people have and then some time for questions if they come from you as well. And I have a handful of slides, but we will move through those quickly. So we'll start with the graphs. You've seen multiple different ones. This one actually is showing you the frequency of new cases per one hundred thousand individuals in the population for the greater Huntsville metro area. So that's primarily limestone in Madison County. You can actually look back at that chart and you can remember where you were in July and where you were in December and January. We are in a much better place now. Here we are in May. This was data that I pulled yesterday, seven point four new cases per hundred thousand. Today's number is about six point three. So we continue to, you know, to slowly move our way down. Many, many fewer cases. We're dealing with somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty new cases a day across the area. Such a change from from where we were. COVID Act Now is one of the multiple websites that I actually go and get my data from. You can look at Bama Tracker. You can look at the Department of Public Health. What I like about this is it shows you a whole host of information, including the number of people that have gotten at least one dose. And it shows you the general trends at the bottom of the chart over the last thirty days in terms of number of new cases, hospitalizations and deaths. So it just gives you at a glance a lot of information. Let's jump to vaccines. You've already heard a little bit about that. Hundred and fifty-one thousand individuals have received at least one dose across the country. Hundred and twelve million individuals have been fully vaccinated. Those are fantastic numbers. Nationally, you can see what percentage of individuals at the different age groups. Let me jump us just to Madison County. So this is from the Department of Alabama's, the department, the Alabama Department of Public Health. They have a great website where you can go through and look at lots of different information and you can break it down and parse it out as many different ways as you would like. Again, this is just Madison County. What you can see at a glance is that each one of those bars, blue bars is the number of vaccines that were administered per day. And you can see how that number went up as you heard as vaccine availability increased. And now we're at the point where we aren't worrying about not enough shots to go in the arms that would like them. Now we have more shots than we have arms of people that are willing to get shots. And that's a challenge because we clearly do not have all of our citizens vaccinated. So we have seen a pretty significant drop off and we've seen that mirrored really around the country as we reached into early April, that now there are many more shots than people that are lining up to get those shots. If you look at the number of people in Madison County that have started vaccination, so they've at least received their first shot, or if it was the Johnson and Johnson, they've received their only shot. You can see, as you heard just a minute ago, a significant percentage of our oldest, most vulnerable population, that group seventy-five and older, that's the light blue line at the bottom, have been vaccinated. And then you see decreasing numbers as you move younger down the list. So that we're at about thirty-one percent of individuals sixteen to fifty-four that have started their vaccination process. You can also break that down on the left-hand side of the screen by race and on the right-hand side by ethnicity. These are small numbers and I apologize for that. I broke my cardinal rule of too many bits of information on one slide at a time. But the key, for example, you can see that the green bar on the left-hand side, twenty-nine point six percent of the African-American population in Madison that is eligible for vaccination has gotten vaccination. That's the green bar. The red bar at the bottom, thirty-nine point four percent of the eligible Caucasian population in Madison has received or has started their vaccination. You can see it is not necessarily we are not necessarily vaccinating across all our different ethnic groups at the same rate. Now let me jump to variants. So viruses mutate. That's just the way they work. So none of us should be surprised that the SARS-CoV-2 virus has gained new mutations. The challenge is when those mutations give it some additional challenging property, like it makes it more easily transmissible. Or it makes the virus less likely to respond to the immunity that you have either because you've already been sick and recovered or because you've been vaccinated. So those are the two things you really want to watch for. So this graph that I'm showing you, again, I just want you to look at general trends. This is showing you in two-week windows, starting at the far left from the beginning of January or the the end of January, all the way through the most recent data from the CDC, which was the tenth of April. This is showing you in the groups around the country that are testing the specific types of of variants. So this is more than saying, do you have COVID nineteen? This is actually reading through the genetic recipe book of a handful of those people that tested positive. They're color-coded based on the types of variants that you see. And on the far left-hand side, the variants that we were really concerned about are in that beige, orange and red color. And you can see that as we've gone throughout the year, those have increased pretty drastically in frequency. That beige one is the variant that you probably know as the UK variant, where it was first identified in the United Kingdom. Across the country, that now makes up well more than half of all of the cases. It is more transmissible maybe by sixty or seventy percent compared to what we'll call classic SARS-CoV-2. But fortunately, all of the vaccines are equally effective against it compared to the classic version. It's when you start looking at the versions from Brazil and South Africa and potentially from India, which are not shown on this graph because we see them really at low levels in America. Those are the ones that you want to worry about because our vaccines are slightly less effective against them. And I'll show you that in just a second. This just shows you that around the country, the specific percentage of the variants differs. As you might expect, you're going to see more of the variants first identified in California on the West Coast, more of the variants first identified in New York on the East Coast. And here in the South, we've got sort of a blend. But again, in all of them, that largest portion of the pie chart is the variant that was first identified in the United Kingdom. This is the slide that makes me the happiest because each one of these checkmarks says that the vaccine is effective against the different variants. The vaccines were developed with a built-in buffer layer so that even if the variants were able to evade part of the vaccine response, they still don't drop below the level where they aren't effective and they aren't able to do their job. So they might be seventy-two percent instead of eighty-three percent, but that is still higher than the forty to sixty percent you typically see with, for example, the flu vaccine every year. So all of the variants that have been identified, even the ones that we are concerned about, there is at least one vaccine out there that does its job. This is why it is so important that we get vaccines into arms because the virus continues to mutate. And you don't want lots of people catching the virus, having additional chances for it to mutate where you end up with a version of the virus where the vaccine is no longer effective. That takes us back to square one. That is a very bad day for a geneticist and for an immunologist and for any community planner. We are not at that point. Let me be really clear. The vaccines we have do their job. I'm in the homestretch, guys. I know that you have had a long evening. Here are the key questions that I get asked the most. When will vaccine approval be extended to teenagers and children? Today, the FDA granted emergency use authorization for the Pfizer vaccine for individuals twelve to fifteen. It already had been approved for individuals sixteen and above. I expect you'll see the Moderna vaccine be approved for teenagers sometime in the next several weeks. It hasn't been, they haven't taken it for approval yet. I think later this summer, you will see emergency authorization extended to children as well as additional studies are done as they pull out that additional safety data. How long will immunity last? At least seven to eight months because that's how long it's been since the folks that were in clinical trials last summer have had the vaccine. So that doesn't mean that it's seven or eight months vaccine usage drops. It just means we don't have data longer than that to track that. Most people expect that you'll see that at least out to twelve months and maybe even longer. But we'll know when we see it dropping the people in the clinical trials and we'll have several months advance notice before the majority of the population that's been vaccinated has to worry about that. Which leads to will booster shots be needed? That depends on how long immunity lasts and what happens with variants. So it's a bit of a, not a bit, it is a giant question mark. And will COVID nineteen become seasonal? Again, it depends on what happens to the variants. It's quite likely that it will become something that over the next two or three years is just a part of our population. And many of us have some level of immunity against it. And so you're offered the possibility to have a COVID vaccine along with your flu vaccine. And now let me stop right there and see if there are any final questions before I get out of your way and let you continue with tonight's business.
Well, I just want to say thank you for not having a test. But I did want to ask, what are the reasons that you're hearing and seeing for people refusing to get the vaccine? And how can we communicate the importance to our family and friends of this measure of protection?
I think that there are a host of reasons why people choose not to get vaccinated and it's difficult. It would be difficult to lump them all into one. Some of the ones that I hear often are based in misinformation that I've read on the internet, that it's going to cause sterility, that it has a microchip implanted in it, that it lets the government track my movements. And you know, on the one hand, that's, that may seem very very far out in left field, but for people that that's where they get their primary source of news, they fully believe that that is the case. You've got another group of people that I think are concerned because they don't have years and years of data. And that's, that's a fair point. For all vaccines, we don't see long-term effects. You see side effects happen within the first six to eight weeks. We don't have a reason to look for long-term effects. But we haven't, we haven't seen them, but I think those people are going to, I don't know at what point they will say, okay, we've now got enough data that I'm, that I'm comfortable. Vaccines are subjected to an incredibly high level of rigor and testing. And the data show that our COVID nineteen vaccines are safe. Are there rare side effects for for extreme allergic reaction? And for these blood clots, yes, but those happen on the order of one in a million, two to three to four in a million. This is not something that happens to large percentages of the population. And then I think you have individuals that don't want to be vaccinated because they would prefer not to have someone tell them what to do. And so, you know, there are varying levels of why people make those decisions. I recognize people have good reasons for why they make those decisions. I try to provide them with answers to their questions and give them, if they're looking for something, try to point them to where they can find that. But that isn't necessarily always going to be enough to change somebody's mind. That was a really long answer.
No, no, no. Thank you, Dr. Lamb. I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
I have one more. So how will you guys look at, because I don't know of one person since April who I've heard had the flu. Everybody that had something had COVID. Where'd the flu go? And why isn't this a bad flu?
Where did the flu go? The flu season this year was incredibly low. The season, the flu season in the southern hemisphere back in the summer was really low. And so you, and because you had so little travel between hemispheres, you didn't seed it into North America. And then if you remember from much of flu season, we were all practicing social distancing and masking and really good hand hygiene, which on the one hand tells you that that actually works, reducing our incidence of infectious disease. There are some people that are concerned that flu and cold season this coming year might be really challenging because we've had a year where it hasn't been in the system. We're all going to be back together, knock on wood, in those spaces. So I think that you are gonna, it went because we had the appropriate measures to mitigate against it.
Dr. Lamb, I've got one too. I've been tracking that website and I know the council's going to chuckle because I send them screenshots every week about our percentages on vaccination, but I saw today that we were at forty-three point nine nine percent in Madison County. And I'm wondering, what should that number be to get herd immunity? What's reasonable? What should we be going for? What's our goal?
Renee, I don't think we actually have a really good answer around that. Hurt immunity is going to be built around the number of people that have been vaccinated and the number of people that have had COVID and recovered that mounted a strong enough immune response to have an immune response. And those two pieces, some people say sixty percent, some people say seventy-five percent. Some of it also depends on the frequency of the infection within your community. And if you had COVID in April of twenty twenty, what will your immune response look like in December of twenty twenty-one? So you know, you, because you've got this distance and time and some people didn't mount a strong immune response. A positive antibody test isn't enough to tell you. So we don't know, but I can tell you the research that I've been seeing recently says that we probably are fifteen to twenty million more people getting vaccinated. At which, once we cross that, you're going to begin to see numbers drop even more rapidly. Because now, together, you won't have reached herd immunity, but you will have made it harder for the virus to find somebody new to infect. And you already see that in your older populations and your nursing homes. You already see they've crossed that threshold. So can I give you a specific number? No. Can anyone give you a specific number? No. Are we there? No. Are we moving in the right direction? Yes. Will we know when we've gotten there? We'll see the numbers change.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody. I don't mind.
The first one is I've heard, you know, they say that if you get COVID, you have immunity for ninety days. Is that an anecdote? Is that? Is that true?
It's an anecdote. The data that I recently looked at about a month ago found that many people who had COVID and recovered were still showing an immune response even at six or seven months out. Now, the challenge is that not everybody mounts the same strength of an immune response. And the people that were asymptomatic, in many cases, mount a very, very weak immune response. So their level of protection may be quite short-lived. But individuals that had symptoms, that got sick, didn't even necessarily have to go to the hospital, but they had an immune response that was lasting out in the six or seven-month window.
Okay. And the second question is for our younger people. Okay, and the second question is for our younger people. I have heard also that some women are not getting shots because they are trying to have children. Is that something that needs to be worried about?
I think you've just touched on a very personal and emotionally laden issue. I would like to have children. I don't want to do anything that puts my child at risk. The data that we have, and again, it's not a ton of data, but the data that we have suggests that these vaccines do not cause fertility problems, do not cause miscarriages, and do not cause birth defects. And we see that from individuals that got pregnant in the clinical trial window without realizing it and had already been vaccinated. We see that even earlier in some of our animal studies. And the, the CDC just conducted a pretty significantly large study of women that were pregnant and got vaccinated. Now that said, I still recognize there's a level of uncertainty because we don't have that data. I can say this, women that are pregnant and get COVID are at a higher risk of challenges with their pregnancy. They're at a higher risk of blood clots. They're at a higher risk of miscarriages. So it's a balancing, it's a risk decision making process that everybody has to undergo. I can say, the stories that circulate on social media that say that the vaccine is going to cause you to become sterile, there is no truth to that at all. That is not grounded in reality.
Thank you. And if you'd like to know more about Dr. Lamb or see any more of his wonderful presentations, he has a, it's on YouTube, Terrible Science. And he is, I love the way he explains things. I am not a scientist. I'm a business major. And that was a long time ago. But the way he explains things, you put things in real terms that real people, ordinary citizens can understand. And I really appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you. It's been my honor to be able to provide communication to the communities of Madison in the middle of the pandemic. It's been a real, I think it will be one of the things that I am the most proud of about my career that the institute said, yes, let's do this. Let's move forward with this.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you all. I'm sorry I took up so much of your so much.
Lot of good information.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Lamb.
All of our presentation and awards tonight, and then we'll move into the public comments. We don't have anybody that signed up, but I'd like to address council and mayor. We've got three, three, three minutes. Peace. Yeah, go ahead, sir. If you'll come up here to the podium and state your name, that'd be.
Edward Mathias. I was interested in what the plans are for money for this. I know the schools are going to get money for the COVID relief program and other things. And I was here, it was over a year ago now. They talked a lot about schools and the need for money to build schools. And I don't think that's changed and the problems of not having enough, able to get a grant to build the schools that we need in the next four years, which was back two years ago. I think that's still the case. I just like to know what the plan is for the infrastructure because more jobs are coming here. I work in the hypersonic division. And I know that if, if it's, jobs are going to come here and people are going to come here. And there's going to be a lot of influx of people. And we're going to need schools. I hope we get a good plan together and be able to figure out how to use that best, use that money. I think it could be used for infrastructure. I hope you'd consider that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's like being a four way stop sign.
Okay, very quickly, one thing I want to thank you all for getting ceramics back. I have a feeling that the state had a lot to do with that and it set up some roofs. We call it Gulag Twenty One up there. Unreal. Also, on the consent agenda, a number I, I have some questions about that. I'd rather not use my three minutes talking about that now. I would like to know what CB, CD, BG dash CB means. And also, thirdly, I have an easement drainage problem. I can't seem to get the city to do anything about it. We've had a lot of rain here lately, yesterday. Just does not, it's just high enough on your easement that I've spent a bunch of money on trying to get it done. And I can't get anybody to come out there and look at it and see it's not doing right. I think Greg is going to try to help me with it.
This is on Radisson, on your, at your house?
At my house.
Gary, are you aware of the problem?
Behind me, I don't think it was inspected correctly, not to dump on other people. And since that house has been built, I've just gotten all kind of water in my backyard. I've put in French drains. It's not doing the job because the easement has a little rise in it and it just stops and backs up into my backyard. And within that easement, I have telephone poles, AT&T, underground lines and other things. Everything is in this easement. And if it doesn't get done, I'm going to get a ditch cut going down that way, hoping I don't hit anything because it is just, it's just going to be too much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Felicia. And I'm here to remind everyone of certain things. Do you have a good memory? Well, let's see. Do you remember what you were doing October the twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen? Does anything, was anything burned into your memory? Well, it was mine that day. And I want to share something with you that I think is important for us to remember. That day, my son Dana Sherrod Fletcher was murdered by the Madison Police Department. And the memory has been burned into my brain and will remain there. Justice has not been served in his case. And I'm still looking for that. This is what I remember. This is what I remember and I want everyone to remember these things with me. Dana was brutalized. The dog was sick, sick on him. He was paid. And then he was shot several times. He was sitting in the van and with his eight year old daughter and his wife, had not done anything. And they shot and killed him. Today, we saw the award given to one of the officers on the police department, Madison Police Department. And one of the characteristics that they said she displayed was character, integrity. Was able to de- escalate certain cases. But the ones that approached my son and his family on October the twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, did not have any of those qualities at all. You can tell by what, by what you hear. And that's what I want you to, to remember is that Dana was a loving person. He was a quiet person. Most people didn't even know that, a lot of people probably didn't know Dana.
That's three minutes, Ms. Fletcher. Anybody else like to address council or mayor? Not, we'll move into the constituent agenda, finance committee report.
Finance committee, finance committee overlooked the bills and this baby won't get you an answer on. I consent to agenda. And I guess I want to point out that the Senator Tom Butler made a donation of more than thirteen thousand dollars for the soccer fields at Pinal Park. With that, I'd like to move to verbal.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you hear me? Okay. What you're asking about is the Madison County CDBG dash CV projects. And that is the Department of Human Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Community Development Block Grants. Okay? And I have, can I just give this, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, I don't.
I got a handout right here that explains what it is, is that TARCog is requesting us to, it says, okay, CV is the coronavirus action. And so what they've asked is that we help them apply for these grants that will give Movitella Health Units, Testing and Vaccination, Volunteer Police Department, I mean Fire Department, grants for the county, Food and Security and Distribution Support, County Health Department assistance with the vaccine rollout. And also, there's project administration in there. But if you want to look at this, you're welcome to it. It's not, it doesn't cost the city anything. We're just signing on that we support them applying for this grant.
To try to get it for the community.
Right. Did that, did that help?
Fletcher.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Motion is second. Any, any other discussion? I get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And motion passes. We went to a presentation of reports and start with mayor.
All right, and I'll try to move quickly. We first asked council support of resolution number twenty twenty one dash one forty three dash R approving the annual appropriation agreement with the Madison County Health Department for their FY twenty one appropriation in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars to be paid from the general fund. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passing.
All right. Thank you, council. And we'll move on to number two with ask for your approval of resolution number twenty twenty one dash one forty four dash R approving the annual appropriation agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau for their FY twenty one appropriation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to be paid from the general fund.
Move to approve.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passing.
All right. And I don't think on any appropriations that I've ever done, I've had two groups on any polar, more polar area. The Health Department wishes they would quit doing work and the CVB can't wait to get back to work. So we appreciate both entities and, and are happy to take care of them. Two other quick things, real quickly. First, we had our four finalists for the police chief here Saturday morning. I want to thank HR. I know you guys, you can just echo and then we don't have to go through every one of y'all. But HR did a fabulous job of setting us up for success. They continue to do that. Samantha was working diligently to have those ready by close, by the council meeting. And in a very nice way, she told me, you're not really smart enough to understand why it's not going to work. But she needs about sixteen more hours for it to buffer, to get the proper quality that we would want for every one of those four to have a, no, it'll be ready, be ready tomorrow. Yeah, so it was buffering to, and it had about fourteen, fifteen hours left. And so we've got to get that done and ready. I think the community is going to be very pleased to see the quality of those. We'll put them up on the website. And I know they'll have some time to look at that as will council, to have a chance to look at that again. But again, thank you to HR, to our entire team for having those ready. And we'll continue to move forward with those. Also, Trash Pandas Baseball starts tomorrow night here at home. They're right now telling us it's a sellout. Two things for our community, you know, one, have patience with us and them. Bringing seven thousand people into that stadium. While we've done a good job of having four different areas, Zert Road, Waltrana, Lime Quarry and the interchange worked on and taken care of, it is still going to be busy. And we ask the community to have some patience with us, but as we all celebrate our opening day there. And along those same lines, we've had several questions. The audit that was mentioned a couple of different times finished at least on the part where they received everything they needed from Ball Corp's last week. They are in process of compiling that now. And I want the community to know that when we get that data, you'll get that data. I don't have anything other than, you know, anything that I could give you any more detailed than our, you know, both Ms. Bartlett, Teddy have worked diligently to make sure that we get that taken care of. We've got what we need. Once the auditors have that, we'll get it to the community. And we look forward to presenting that. But with that said, that's all. Oh, one last thing I don't, also, this is building safety month. I have a proclamation here. I know Dustin's going to present it, I think, later this month when they have a ceremony. But May is Building Safety Month and he'll let him present that proclamation in a couple of weeks. Now I'm done.
Very good. Edition number one.
Yes, sir. I wanted to announce that the roundabout has been delayed. Construction is tentative to start May seventeenth and it was delayed due to subcontractors being delayed with getting the proper signage out for the motorists. And then, as many are aware, we're doing a major renovation for Kids' Kingdom. The park is over twenty years old, probably close to twenty five years old. We're kicking it off next Saturday at Yellow Hammer from two to four. They have graciously offered us their tap room to go. And proceeds of the refreshments will be going towards the project. And so we want to give a shout out to them. That'll be two to four, Yellow Hammer, which campus eight oh five, right? Not the stovehouse, right? Campus eight oh five. So love to see everyone there. And we're going to get some communication up and running to let our city know about what's going on at Kids' Kingdom. We're very excited about this project. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Edition number two.
I have a couple of things. First, I would like to, one of my constituents sent me an email about us developing a sports commission that would actively recruit and help plan local sporting events like baseball, what are they called, tournaments and that type of thing. I'd like to know if we could maybe add that to one of our work session agenda.
We can, but I think a perfect example is we already have folks that do that for us. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, that's one of the things that they do. As a matter of fact, they're bringing the SWAC baseball tournament to this area. And they will continue to work on that. And the Trash Pandas themselves are working to obtain that. So at this point, with a recreation committee, we can have a discussion on it, but we already have folks that do that.
Maybe that's what we need to have at the workshop, to more, more fully educate some of us about it.
Yeah.
Just, it doesn't have to be the topic, just.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, police chief interviews were wonderful. The pre-selection committee did a great job. Thank you to Terry Towery and her HR team and Samantha and Jason and all the IT help we had. I want to encourage all of our residents to watch those interviews if you are not able to do so on Saturday and in person on Saturday. But please let us know your opinions. I mean, we hear all the time, we're not listening, we're not listening. Well, sometimes it's because we're not getting any emails, and we don't know what you want. So please do that. We had an Industrial Development Board meeting last week, and I don't know if y'all are aware, but the Industrial Development Board was instrumental in bringing gigaparts to Madison, and now they are going to be expanding their facilities and actually branching out into manufacturing, and that's very exciting.
Very good.
Also, thank you to Neil Lamb for being here tonight and giving us our update. That was one of those things that I kind of enjoyed. Also, it is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And today I was watching one of the news channels and, well, I was watching the news on one of the local channels, and somebody brought up that one of the most important things that we need to be aware of is that everybody just wants safety, respect, and acceptance. And sometimes people question as to why it's this month or that month. But by highlighting different months and different heritages, it helps to educate all of us and to help us be more accepting of others, and education is how we become accepted. And so anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Edition number three.
I just wanted to thank Engineering and Public Works. We had an issue with all the rain we had. I know we continue to work that. It's an issue we have over on Hurst Haven in that area, and that's continually worked. We've done more than our share in some of those issues, and, you know, some of it relies on other entities within the city, outside the city, actually. So I just wanted to thank both Public Works and Engineering, continue to work that. I know the Mayor's Office is working as well. And then I just wanted, I mean, I am so grateful to be here, and it's amazing that I can sit up here. And I've been elected or appointed, I mean, elected, because, you know, I sit up here and I see the kids from kindergarten that can beat me in chess. And then I have a doctor that comes in and talks to me about COVID, and I understood most of it. And then the police chiefs, you know, I mean, we had, we had people, nationally ranked folks come in and interview. And out of sixty applicants, the Mayor's Office was able to cut it down to four. And we're going to struggle to get it down to one, so I don't know if we can request to hire all four of them, or if there's any way to do that. It was just, it's such an amazing thing to be able to have that caliber of people that want to be here in Madison and to have the citizens we have. So thank you for letting me be part of this. That's all I got.
Edition number five.
First, Council, I just want to thank you for letting me bring my chess kids here tonight. This year has been so challenging with the pandemic, and the kids don't get that instant gratification of getting their trophies or medals or things right after a tournament. There's a bit of a delay when you have to do these online, and so thank you for making a special night for these kids. And I also wanted to thank Cory. We, I had someone in my district send me a photograph of a large tree that had been dying. It looked like it was about to fall on top of anybody that walked underneath it, and I was so appreciative to get this photograph, and I sent it to Cory. He immediately dispatched our arborist to look at that and then work on getting that tree down. But in addition to that, he invited me to meet the arborist, because I am all over this issue, and I really am excited that we're going to have a plan for auditing trees. I'm not just auditing finances. I know I'm on finance, but we're looking at trees in our community and inspecting that and being more proactive, and I just want to say kudos to Cory for doing that and letting me meet the arborist. I had a really nice meeting with him. Jason, I really want to congratulate you for your award tonight. So much of what you do is behind the scenes, but if you're reading the headlines, what you do is so integral to our city and keeping us safe and all the little warning emails that you send us, and you keep us sharp and vigilant. And I just want to thank you so much, and I'm so glad you received that award tonight. And I'm going to close with my shop, Local Spotlight. I love highlighting local businesses, and tonight I'm going to highlight and go down Madison Boulevard to Bronx Jewelers. They're having an anniversary sale until May fifteenth, and you know what? May is a big month for giving gifts, so if you were late for Mother's Day, get on over there before May fifteenth. Or we've got graduates, graduations happening to celebrate. We have weddings coming up in June. I just want to highlight that we have this wonderful jewelry store right here in Madison and encourage you to shop local. Thank you.
You get to buy one, get one, keep trying.
No, no keys up for wife and somebody else, or?
Asking for a friend, that's all.
District number six.
Tonight was one of those meetings that are so enjoyable, to watch the people be commemorated for their hard work that they do, to watch the police and the fire and whatever around here in the city, to be acknowledged for their hard work and to see the little kids. You know, and then also the people on the E, the E games and stuff, that it's so exciting to see so much happening in our, in our community. And I did want to thank Senator Butler and Senator Orr for being here and doing that and just bringing attention to something that's just a really growing thing, to get scholarships now. I mean, my kids sat there and played games for years and years. I'm thrilled now that people get scholarships. But I think it's fun to have these kinds of meetings. It brings in the community, and I think that is great. Several things. First, with the question about schools and stuff. The Board of Education met last week. They are already talking about the need for another elementary school in three years. So it is being looked at. I can't say anything about how funding infrastructure, that sort of thing, but I do want you to know, they are looking at these things. They are planning it. So I thought that was, it was good to know that. Also, Madison Street Festival, another passion of mine. Registration is May fifteenth, this Saturday. So anybody that wants to be a vendor, especially food vendor, I'm looking for food vendors, but there's all sorts of opportunities. And there'll be opportunities for serving, for volunteers, just to have the Madison Street Festival back, I think is great. So, yeah, if you're interested, May fifteenth is registration day. Also, please, everyone who can, watch the video of the interviews for the police. I really, like Connie said, we want to know your feedback. We want to know what you feel is best for our city as you watch these four men talk about what they, what their vision would be for Madison. So please do that, and please contact, contact any of us, contact me. I would love to hear your voice on something that is so important to our city. Also, this week I had one of my constituents, David Kessler, reach out, and he was concerned about Hughes. Okay, Hughes goes right through my district. I'm sure he's not the only one that has had these thoughts, but why are there not going to be curbs and drainage on the east side? Okay, so reached out to Gary. For Gary, we found out what was going on. Okay, the project was originally built to have the curbs and the gutters, right? But a redesign was required because there's so many utilities underneath. You couldn't do it and still have good drainage. You could do it, but it'd been just too, too cost prohibitive. There was no way. It was too expensive. And so without the, without unlimited funds, they had to go ahead and change it, right? So the redesign was done, okay? When the redesign was done, the contract was redone too. So I just want everyone to know that the, once the changes were put in place, it is a savings of five hundred thousand dollars to us because we aren't enjoying it. And I know it looks good to have it, but there was a reason that it can't be done, and in the process, we actually had a saving. So I just want everybody to wear that, especially those that are good, driving down Hughes. One side will have curb and gutters, the other won't, but it's for a very good reason. Also, the Senior Center, they are now open. They have two hundred, they have two hundred and forty meals now going out of their weekly. They had three hundred and sixty-seven activity participants. I love that the Senior Center is back open again. So much is happening there. And it's happening safely, and I think that's really important too. So that is everything I have. Trash Pandas, best of luck as your new season starts. Thank you.
Edition number seven.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I guess first thing I laid off for the Trash Pandas. I'm really looking forward to that next, tomorrow night. I know some of us that sat here, I don't know, four years ago when this was starting, lost a lot of sleep over that decision. And, you know, I felt then and I feel now, that is the spark that will literally ignite. I say literally, not, I mean figuratively, it's not in there, but figuratively, you know, get that area going. And, and I think tomorrow night is, while it's already begun, tomorrow night, we'll see, for those engineers watching or engineers in the audience, have an inflection point, and the slope will increase. So, but just really, really looking forward to it. It's the beginning of a lot of great things. Baby, you're going to love it. I'm going to take it to the game. It's on, on. Other thing I do want to mention is I got a big compliment the other day for Cory and Parks and Rec, as well as the schools working together for the thirteen through eighteen-year-old baseball league. We've grown so much in trying to do coed adult sports up at Palmer that there was a need for additional field space for youth baseball. And we were able to work with the schools to utilize, at least right now, Liberty Middle Schools, baseball field, now that they're done with their season. And just been a lot of good compliments to Cory and his team and Madison City Schools for working together to pull that off. So good teamwork there. And Jason, I do want to give you another, and all of the, you know, police, fire, and city employees of the year. But with things that are going on, and I won't get into all the details, but the fact that you kept us cyber secure is, is a big, big deal. And let's just say, yeah. It, I guess it seems to be a big business right now for some folks, and so thank you to what you are doing, what you have done. And please keep doing it, and, you know, thank you. So that's all I've got.
One thing, we had originally penciled in a work session next Wednesday night. That's something everybody still on calendars. All right, so work, work session next Wednesday night at five, at five thirty. That's all I have. We don't have any board. Our committee appointments tonight, and there's no public hearings, so we'll move into department reports to start with. Engineering.
Just got two administrative items for you tonight. First one is a question of approval for Resolution Number 2021-141-R, Accepting East Use Subdivision into the maintenance program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? It was John and Karen. Everything is done.
Everything's done.
I'm sorry, Abink and Downs.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Same.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
And, and motion passes.
I'm also requesting approval for Resolution Number 2021-142-R, Acceptance of the Bartlett Mills Subdivision in the maintenance program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
All the work been done. I got your call. After four years, I've learned.
Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
And my speaker Barbette would use at risk.
Yeah, I've already heard it is.
Very much so.
Good evening. I'm presenting for Mary Beth this evening, and I have a second reading for ordinance number 2021-113. And this is a proposal to vacate the easement that you can see the diagram on the screen. It's about a hundred and thirty-five square feet. And the owners of a property located at one thirty-one Bluff Spring Drive in the Heritage Plantation subdivision would like to build a hobby house in their backyard, and the easement vacation is necessary for them to complete that. This is the second reading, so I'd like to ask for your approval tonight.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Megan. Revenue.
Thank you for Cameron tonight, and it's going to be the second reading for Proposed Ordinance 2021-130 for the ordinance for the City of Madison, Alabama, to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the third full weekend of July as authorized by Section 423213 of the Code of Alabama, generally referred to as the state sales tax holiday or the back-to-school holiday.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any, any discussion?
What's unique about this is we're doing it for every year instead of having to do it for only one year, as long as the state continues to do it, correct?
Right.
Can I get a vote, please?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Cameron did that because he gets tired coming up here every week.
Well, last year, then they brought COVID with them, right?
Me again. I have another second reading for you. This is ordinance number 2021-140. And this ordinance approves an agreement between Madison Utilities and Breland Homes, and it's a purchase and sale agreement in order for Breland Homes to purchase a well site within a subdivision that they are developing. And Madison Utilities will retain the water rights to the area for up to five years, and Breland Homes is also obligated to reconstruct a water line and the title won't transfer until that's done. This is the second reading, and Madison Utilities Board has signed off on this, and so it comes to you all for approval, and I'd like to ask for that this evening.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to know a little bit more about it, so that the well rights, the well's gone, but they have the rights to the water. Sorry.
Sorry.
You're on the board, that's why.
Um, the well is there. I moved my mic up here. In these days, Teddy, I'm putting you in the corner.
Already in the corner.
Madison Utilities will retain the rights to the well, and after we, everything is completed, all the water lines are in and everything, and the title passes, they'll actually retain the equipment from the well so that it can be repurposed at a different well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, ma'am. I'm afraid to ask.
Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
And motion passes. Thank you. Is there any other miscellaneous business or announcements? Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.